Twenty twenty-three meeting of the Baltimore County Planning Board. It's now called to order. I'm Nancy Hafford, the Chair. And now I will start with a meeting with a roll call to account for our members that are present. When you hear your name, please say aye. Mr. Arey.
Aye.
Brophy.
Aye. I fixed my camera on this.
Oh, the woo-woo. She's gonna be flipping on us here. Ms. German.
Aye.
Mr. Hafer. Mr. Heckman.
Aye.
Mr. Heinel. Mr. Hinton.
Aye.
Mr. Halepka.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. McGinnis.
Aye.
Mr. Perlo. Mr. Perlo, I know you're on there.
You now?
Yep, I got you. Ms. Panero. Mr. Warren.
Aye.
And Ms. Wolfson.
Aye.
Please join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic.
For which it stands.
One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all. Ms. Bensley, are there any changes to the tentative agendas published?
No changes, Madam Chair.
Thank you so much. In the April twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three email, you received draft minutes from the April twentieth meeting. Has everybody had an opportunity to look at them? Any corrections or additions? Can I entertain a motion to accept the minutes as circulated? And?
Motion.
Thank you. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you. First on our agenda, we have a presentation by Ms. Amy Mante, Deputy Director of the Department of Planning, on the Baltimore County Master Plan of twenty twenty-three, um, twenty thirty. The items will be introduced tonight, and then the Board is asked to schedule a virtual public hearing for May eighteenth. The Board is scheduled to deliberate on the matter on June first, and final vote will be scheduled on June fifteenth. Now, please join me in welcoming Ms. Mante.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and members of the Planning Board. I'm Amy Mante, Deputy Director for the Department of Planning. The Department of Planning is proud to introduce Master Plan twenty thirty, Baltimore County's ten-year comprehensive plan. This afternoon, I'm going to provide a broad overview of the plan. We'll be moving through the master plan online as I'm presenting. A more in-depth presentation will be delivered prior to the public hearing. Master Plan twenty thirty represents the culmination of a lengthy master planning process, which began in the spring of twenty twenty-one, and included extensive community engagement, recommendations from local experts and stakeholders, as well as deliberation among county agencies and Department of Planning staff. For many of you who attended the public meetings, you may remember the three interwoven themes in the master plan, which are equity, being inclusive in our decision-making, ensuring equitable distribution of resources, and creating opportunity for all; sustainability, ensuring the long-term sustainability of the county's infrastructure, and safeguarding the county's ecology and climate; vibrant communities, ensuring that all residents have access to high-quality, accessible, and affordable housing; cultural and recreational opportunities in safe communities while promoting responsible economic development. These themes run throughout the plan elements, particularly influencing the goals and actions that are found in the growth and vision frameworks. We also had four goals in mind as we created Master Plan twenty thirty: focus on preparing for the future needs of the county; incorporate best planning practices; provide clear implementation guidelines and benchmarks; and create a living document that will evolve through the years. In creating Master Plan twenty thirty, it was planning's intention to shift the master plan from a static document completed at a point in time to a living and dynamic document that is updated regularly. We've used an online platform called Story Maps to create the master plan. This platform has allowed us to be more creative and transparent in formatting Master Plan twenty thirty than we would have been with a static printed document. It will also allow, as legislative changes dictate, us to easily update the plan. Also, an implementation dashboard will be created after the master plan is adopted by county council, and it will include implementation strategies and tracking of progress. As we heard from communities, there's a desire to establish a measurable implementation plan for the master plan. The master plan is divided into four sections: the overview, the growth framework, place types map, and the vision framework. The overview provides a guide for all four sections, including background on the process and engagement. The growth framework is focused on outlining a new approach to growth in Baltimore County over the next ten years. This new approach is called retrofitting. Retrofitting means embedding planning principles such as density, walkability in public space into the well-established patterns of the modern suburban built environment in order to improve the efficiency and well-being of anyone who lives there. The Department of Planning developed a methodology to identify areas in the county that are most suitable for retrofitting, creating the conditions for the next step in the evolution of our suburban landscape. Planning then identified locations throughout Baltimore County using a neutral data-driven process based on a number of geographic, social, and economic determinants. Twenty-seven metrics were identified, which were condensed into seven categories: demographic status, employment opportunity, funding resources, land use and ownership, neighborhood assets, neighborhood deficiencies, and transportation access. Weights of one, three, or five points were assigned to each layer. Layers were then overlaid atop one another. Overlapping areas with the highest total scores are the resulting core retrofit areas. The vision framework establishes the goals for the future long-range development of a sustainable Baltimore County. As with all sections of the master plan, the vision framework draws heavily from the American Planning Association's report, Sustaining Places: Best Practices for Comprehensive Plans. Throughout the process to develop the master plan, we use this report as a guideline and as a source of inspiration. Sustaining Places is a policy document and a tool that focuses on helping communities achieve livable, healthy communities in harmony with nature, communities that have resilient economies, social equity, and strong regional ties. This idea has been adapted into the six principles of the vision framework: livable built environment, harmony with nature, resilient economy, responsible regionalism, inclusive planning, and healthy community. Each principle includes goals and supporting actions for achieving sustainable outcomes. While I won't be getting into the details of each of the six elements of the vision framework this afternoon, I did want to mention that the vision framework includes a proposal for the small area plan process. I'm mentioning this because it was something we've all heard from communities, many wanting to know when they'll get a new community plan. The small area plans will build on the work previously adopted, build on the work of previously adopted community plans, as well as build on the themes and goals of Master Plan twenty thirty. In recognition of limited staff resources, we've proposed twelve plan boundaries. The small area plans are intended to provide area-specific recommendations for achieving and refining the goals of the master plan. The Place Types Map provides general recommendations for land use based upon the vision framework goals and actions, as well as the retrofit analysis I just described earlier. The map is conceptual and intended to reflect future land use patterns that support the land use objectives of Master Plan twenty thirty. The map does not identify land use of individual properties or parcels. The Place Types Map will provide general direction for county land use decisions and may be amended through small area plan process. The Place Types consists of a range of intensities from undeveloped agricultural areas in rural portions of the county to downtowns and denser neighborhoods that dot the suburban areas of the county. Within the growth framework is the Water Resources Element, or as we call it, the WRE. The WRE is an examination of all water resources in Baltimore County. It includes public and private drinking water supplies, public and private wastewater disposal systems, and stormwater runoff from existing and proposed land uses. The intent of the analysis is to ensure safe and adequate supplies of drinking water, adequate facilities for wastewater disposal, protection of high-quality natural resources, and restoration of impaired water rates. And before I conclude, it's important to note that community engagement has been the foundation of Master Plan twenty thirty. In order to enhance opportunities for engagement as well as transparency in the process, we created various online platforms to engage the community. During the Phase One Community Engagement Listening Sessions, which were held virtually from June to September of twenty twenty-one, we held fifty meetings, had over a thousand attendees, and gathered three hundred, three thousand eight hundred comments. During the Phase Two Consult and Collaborate Sessions, which were held virtually from January to March of twenty twenty-two, we had seven meetings, we had over five hundred sixty attendees, and received over fourteen hundred comments. And to date, over twelve hundred people have joined the master plan website. As you know, from April third to fourteenth of this year, we held an open comment period on this draft of the master plan. During that time, we received one hundred eighty-four comments. We are currently in the process of reviewing those comments and determining edits that should be made to the existing master plan draft. About seventy comments we received did not pertain to the master plan or more are, or were more locally focused. Those will be addressed during the small area plan process I described earlier. The edits to this draft of Master Plan twenty thirty will be available for public review. Prior to the public hearing, we anticipate that they'll be available online next week. This concludes my introduction to Master Plan twenty thirty, and as I said earlier, a more in-depth presentation will be delivered prior to the public hearing. We ask that the Planning Board set a public hearing for May eighteenth. Thank you.
You, Nancy.
Thank you so much, Ms. Mante. And as Ms. Mante mentioned, on May eighteenth, we're going to be going more in-depth on the master plan. She was just giving an overview this morning, so this afternoon, so thank you. Board members, do you have any comments or questions at this time?
Um, yeah, sorry. So this is my first master plan, so just a quick question. So, so Amy, you mentioned we're going to get a more in-depth presentation. Is it prior to the May eighteenth or at the May eighteenth? Because the May eighteenth is a public hearing, right?
Correct. It'll be prior to the public hearing starting.
Okay, so are we just getting like a separate calendar invite for that? Is that how that works, or?
No, it's on your, on your, should be the WebEx that you get for the May eighteenth meeting, but also I think that's in person.
Okay.
That's an in-person meeting.
Mr. Hafer, you had a question?
All right, I have two questions. Uh, first, thanks for the presentation. It was, it was informative so far. Uh, question number one is, and if, if your answers to these questions um, aren't readily available, and they, if, if they can be, um, you know, tied into the next presentation, that, that would be fine. Um, I'm interested in the assuring the representativeness of the comments and the meetings across the county. Um, you know, you presented aggregate numbers of people who had input and the number of meetings, things like that, and that's great, but that is an aggregate number. Uh, if one of the goals is, is equity and diversity, you want to make sure that you have appropriate representation from all, uh, all groups that you're interested in getting feedback from. So to the extent you can add some comments into your presentation that talk about how representative these meetings were in terms of geographic dispersion, race and ethnicity dispersion, all of those different characteristics of input that we're interested in this plan, I think that would help in, uh, people understanding better whether, uh, for, just what are the sources of this, this input and this information? And then my, my second question is about the metrics and how those, what is the process for how those weights were assigned? Who assigned them? What kind of instruction were they given? How did that process work? Um, so that I, I have a better understanding as somebody who's a data analytics expert in terms of what, what went into that? Because again, I want to make sure that the process that was used is one that was fair and equitable across the county.
We will get into the methodology for that, um, at the eighteenth meeting.
Okay.
Any other questions at this time? Yes. Kathy? You're muted.
Hey, Amy, I'm sorry. I, I kind of missed, I heard you talk about the small community plan part, part of this, but I'm on the website now, and could you direct me to where I can find that page?
The Small Area Plans process? Mm-hmm. Um, so it's within the, um, vision framework in the inclusive planning piece. If you scroll down, there should be a link to the Small Area Plan, sort of at the bottom of that section.
Okay, great. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Halepka?
Uh, Amy, just to follow up on Chris's question. I'm assuming that the, um, is the unit of analysis for the, the metrics, is it census tracts? Or how is that done?
Um, Jen will get into it on the eighteenth.
Okay.
Unless she wants to pop up now.
I was just curious, you know, you know, what wasn't tracted? Were you using some other boundary?
No, it wasn't census tract. Some of them were pretty specific. Um, so it was GIS layers, um, not that we overlaid, and not all of them were based on a census tract.
Okay.
Mr. Halepka, do you have, are there any other questions? Not hearing any. If there's no further comments or questions, may I entertain a motion?
Um, be it moved that in accordance with Section thirty-two dash two dash two oh one of the Baltimore County Code, the Baltimore County Planning Board sets a virtual public hearing for citizen comments on the Master Plan twenty thirty for Thursday, May eighteenth, twenty twenty-three at five P M.
Thank you, Mr. Halepka. And may I have a second?
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you. Thank you so much. Next?
Are we in person on the eighteenth, or are we on virtual? It was virtually.
That was my fault. For some reason, I thought it was in person.
Okay.
It's virtual.
Next on our agenda is another presentation by Ms. Mante, this time to provide an overview of the comprehensive zoning map process, CZMP. Following Ms. Mante's presentation, the Board will have an opportunity to ask questions in, about the process. Again, Ms., welcome Ms. Mante.
All right, thank you. Can everyone see the screen? All right, Madam Chair, members of the Board. Um, I'm here again, uh, to provide a presentation, um, on the comprehensive zoning map process. Um, I know that there are, you know, a number of members of the Board who've been through the process before, so you certainly may, uh, remember a lot of this, but I know that we have new Planning Board members, so I wanted to touch on just an overview of the process in general, just so everyone's aware in case you get questions or if you're just curious about it. Um, I'm going to go through a process overview, um, how a CZMP issue is filed, uh, a little bit about the initial, the issue analysis and how we put information out to the public, hearing recommendations and decision piece of this, um, and just sort of common terms and contact information. And this PowerPoint presentation will be sent to you, so you'll have, be able to access that information, uh, if you need it. So, um, CZMP, we kind of look at it in, in a couple of different phases. The first phase is the filing periods. Um, that will begin, uh, in August, actually. So we have an early online period for public, um, applications, August fourteenth through the thirty-first, and that is where the public can go online and just fill out the information for the application. No issues are filed yet or mapped yet, but that sort of starts the process. We have the public filing period, which actually goes from September first to October fifteenth, and that is when the public can file issues. Um, they come in and we, we sit with them and we map their issue. Um, there is a fee involved, which I'll mention in a few minutes. We collect that fee, and officially, their issue is created. Um, probably the most interesting to you is that the Planning Board filing period is October first through the thirty-first, and that's when Planning Board members can meet with us to raise issues. Um, we also, um, meet with you to, uh, map your issue, um, to go through what you're requesting, um, for this issue and any information that you have as to, you know, the justification as to why you're raising the issue. November, um, first through the thirtieth is the county council filing period, so they also have an opportunity to raise issues, um, themselves. Phase two, um, is when we do a lot of internal work. So in December and January is when we do our internal agency review of what's been submitted, um, during those three filing phases. Um, we meet with other agencies. We have other agencies that comment on CZMP. Um, we meet with the administration. We meet with a variety of, uh, stakeholders to go through what's been filed and to work to formulate our recommendation. The third phase, um, really gets into the hearings, and so those who've been on the Planning Board before, um, remember this part with the hearings and, and, uh, going, you know, kind of through that piece of it. Um, this time around, you may remember, we worked, um, to get some legislation changes for CZMP. Um, previously, the Planning Board hearings were in March, and the staff recommendation was in February. We asked to flip that so that staff had the benefit of hearing, um, from the public during the public, uh, during the Planning Board public hearings. So now, the Planning Board public hearings will be in February. Our staff recommendation will come out in March. Uh, Planning Board will still have their work sessions in April and provide the recommendations as we used to do always in April. And then the Planning Board vote is in May, and that's when, um, the Planning Board's recommendations are forwarded or transmitted to county council. Um, in June, county council usually holds their public hearings. Um, July and August is when they have their, you know, own meetings and deliberation um, with applicants, stakeholders, community groups. And then per the code, the county council vote has to happen prior to September sixteenth. So, um, it usually happens in September, um, but it may not be exactly the sixteenth, depending on which day of the week that falls. Just as a kind of glimpse into the past, um, a little bit about CZMP, just from kind of a stats point of view. In twenty twenty, we had three hundred and eight issues that were filed. We mail out, um, over ten thousand notification letters, and, um, you know, four hundred and twenty-three signs were posted. Just to look a little bit further back to twenty sixteen, we had five hundred and fifteen issues filed. We sent out twenty-nine thousand letters, and there were eight hundred issue, or signs posted. So we had a, a little bit of, uh, more issues in twenty sixteen. A lot of those were county council issues that time. Um, for those who are here may remember that. Um, in twenty twenty, it was not quite, um, as many issues as it was the year, the cycle before. Um, just wanted to give you a glimpse into kind of what a applicant goes through, um, to file an issue. It's very similar to what the Planning Board members or the county council go through, with the exception that you don't have to pay the fee. Um, as I mentioned, you have these public filing periods, the Planning Board filing period, which also includes staff issues as well, um, and then a county council filing period. So between October first and thirty-first, that's when you, as the Planning Board members, can come to us, um, to file any issues, um, that you're interested in raising. Um, just like with the applicants, uh, you begin your application online. You file the, you fill out the online application. Um, we get that on our side, um, and then we schedule an appointment with you. We have a little bit more flexibility because there are not as many of you as we may see from the public. Um, but we do schedule an appointment to, to meet with you. Sometimes it's a couple of appointments within that October window. Um, we map the issue boundary. We map, uh, we know what's being requested within that boundary. Um, you know, just like with all the other issues, we map signposting locations. Um, and, you know, we sign the application, and then it is filed. Once that mapping is completed. Um, the signposting for, um, these issues, the public, um, has to pay for, um, a signed poster. We give them a list when they apply of the county's approved sign posters, and they go through one of them to have the sign posted. Um, it requires documentation back to us that it was in fact posted, so we get a little certification sheet from them. For Planning Board, Planning Staff, County Council, um, we handle those with help from the permits and approvals and inspections department, um, but we still get that same certification, but we don't have to go through, um, you know, the same channels that the public does. And also, the sites are posted fifteen days prior to the Planning Board public hearings. Uh, the fees this time around are the same as last time. Um, the early filing fee for, then these are just for public issues. These are not Planning Staff, Planning Board, or County Council before the public. Um, an early filing fee, so September first through the thirtieth, um, for just a, a one applicant applying is a thousand dollars. A late filing fee is, um, October first through fifteenth, and that's sixteen hundred dollars. Associations, um, can also raise issues. It's not quite as expensive for them. Uh, the early filing fee is two hundred and fifty, and the late filing fee is three hundred and fifty. So I just wanted to go through a little bit, um, of what we do internally and kind of how we try to be as transparent as we can about the process and provide as much information as we can to the public. Uh, as I mentioned, December, January, you know, once all these issues have been filed, we meet with other county agencies to review the issues. Um, they provide comments to us, and those comments are made, um, online, uh, to the public. We, um, also provide, um, a staff analysis report for each issue, which is also posted online whenever we release those staff recommendations. Um, as I mentioned, you know, we map out where the signs should be posted, and this is that certificate of posting that we require for, um, to be submitted to us to show that they've been posted. Oftentimes, um, unfortunately, uh, these signs get posted and are pulled up shortly thereafter by someone who doesn't want them there. Um, but once they've been posted, we've met our requirement for posting, um, the property. To kind of also make sure that folks are notified, we also do letters, um, in addition to those signs. So we create a notification map when we map an issue. We map the impacted, which is any properties within the area that could be rezoned and adjacent. We also mail out to anyone who gets, who, who has a property that's touching that boundary. So we, we try to reach as far and wide as we can, which is why, you know, as you saw in those stats, you know, we can send out, you know, twenty thousand letters, uh, during one CZMP, and that's kind of the reason for that number. Um, we try to provide the maps, the application and reports, and, um, at least last CZMP, we were able to show some of the comments, um, through a dashboard. Um, the CZMP website is up, is currently up now. Um, you can go there, uh, to get information about the timeline that I've kind of described here. You can go through, uh, a frequently, frequently asked questions page, uh, which is quite long. We have tried to address every possible question we've gotten, we can remember getting, um, that might come up. I'm sure we've missed something. There's a very long page, um, but we worked really to be pretty comprehensive in addressing as much as we could. The fee schedules there and the signposting procedures are there as well. As we get closer to the August filing, uh, starting, we'll have the application and other things online as well. Um, for those who are here last CZMP or were involved, um, we provided, you know, again, as in our effort to, um, provide some information, we, we did like a little crowdsourcing app to get a sense of, um, support or no support for certain issues. Um, so if folks could go online and, and say whether they supported it or didn't, we didn't take additional comments, um, because we don't have the ability to moderate comments online. Uh, we were trying to keep it simple, but it was an interesting tool just to see, you know, kind of what reaction was out there in the public, um, you know, to a lot of these issues. We also provide, as I mentioned, a lot of our reports and the agency comments online. So once you, um, once these issues start to be filed, there'll be an application on the website to go in and look, um, at things that have been submitted that we can provide digitally. When you go into the app, you can click on the issue. It'll bring up, um, an opportunity to, to retrieve a report on the zoning request and retrieve a report of the planning analysis report. Um, the zoning request report, which I know is really small here, but it provides sort of basic information about the location, the CZMP number, um, what the existing zoning is, what's being requested, if there's been, you know, any justification entered into the application, it's provided here. Um, and then once the agency comments are given, those are provided here as well. So we try to, you know, make clear what we have is, is what the public is able to see. Um, the log of issues really become, becomes kind of the, the main focal point for CZMP. Um, those, like I said, who've been through it before are very familiar with the log of issues. It's a very quick look at, at the issue to find a number, to find a location, to find a request. And then if you've got the log of issues, you kind of can easily go to the tool online and look at the number issue that you're looking for. And we update it, um, pretty- And we update it pretty, pretty quickly, you know, during the filing periods. It's updated weekly, maybe sometimes twice a week. You know, depending on how many issues are coming in at any one time. But we try to keep it updates and the public is aware of the issues almost as soon as they've been raised. As I mentioned, in that sort of third phase, the hearings and the recommendations and the decisions is a big piece of this. In February of twenty twenty-four, we'll have one hearing, one planning board hearing for each county council district. We held them at high schools. It's run as a, as a kind of very standard public hearing meeting. There's no presentation. The planning board members are there. Usually it's an auditorium, so you might be on a stage. And the speakers are given two minutes. So we provide, you know, it gives everyone an opportunity to hear from the public in person. Last C Z M P, we had to go virtual. I think we made it through about two hearings before the pandemic. We're hopeful that the weather cooperates with us in February of twenty twenty-four and we're able to meet in public. But there is a chance, I guess, that we could have to move some of the dates around to, we do build in a few kind of what we call rain dates in case there are, there's snow or sleet and we have to reschedule. Or, you know, we may end up having to do something else to get those in. But hopefully we'll, we'll have a light winter next year. The staff recommendation, as I mentioned, that information is online, is published in the log of issues. It's published, like I said, through that staff analysis report and the information we put online. Once we provide the staff recommendation, the planning board will meet in April. So the staff recommendations in March, planning board meets in April. Have, you have your work sessions and you'll make recommendations usually, usually maybe the first meeting in May. And then shortly after that, we transmit it ever to the county council. As I mentioned, the county council does similar to what the planning board public hearings are. They have one per county, county, county council district. They manage those. Our staff may attend, but we don't run them. Same thing, speakers are given two minutes. The district council member is there. And again, just another opportunity for the public to provide direct input to the county council members. And as I said, the county council must make their decisions on C Z M P prior to September sixteenth. They make a decision for each issue at one county council meeting. So they have one meeting, they start in the first district and they go through voting on each of the issues. Sometimes they vote on them in groups, but we, it usually is a little bit of a long meeting as they go through each of those. There are a couple, some common terms. Those of us who've been doing it for a very long time, we use all these terms interchangeably. And I understand that some folks who may be new to this may not always know. But, you know, just to kind of clarify what the pre-filing or early online application period is, what a mapping appointment means, what an issue is, what the issue number is. A lot of times you may get calls. We certainly get lots of calls and emails. One of the first thing that we're looking for when someone calls us is what is the issue number? That's really the quickest and best way for anyone to answer a question, find information about what is going on with a piece of property. So if they've gotten a letter, if they see a sign, if they've heard about something, we always, you know, what is the issue number? And the issue number is a sign, you know, as soon as the issue's filed. It's a number and a dash and then three numbers. The first number indicates which council district it's in. So the first number will be a one through seven. And then the numbers after that is just a sequence of numbers based on, you know, this was the first issue, this was the second issue we mapped, this was the third issue we mapped. But that issue number is very important. This is our general information. The website is here. There's a little Q R code that should take you to the website once you, you know, you get this presentation by email. We have a general C Z M P email address that we take inquiries from. I've had some questions mostly about the process at this point. And as we have done in the past, there will be one planner assigned to each, each council district. And so if you are interested in discussing an issue, you've got someone who's come to you requesting that you raise an issue, you have some ideas of your own about raising issues. You know, certainly reach out to the area planner for that council district. You can reach out to me as well, and I'll coordinate with them to, to, to kind of meet and discuss and, you know, provide any guidance that we can for the process. And that is it for me on this one. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mante. Very good presentation. And board members, that, for those of you that have not been involved in the C Z M P process before, I just want you to know that you might get some calls and emails. So not a lot, but people sometimes do call you and ask you to support things that they're requesting. So at this time, are there any board members that have any questions for Ms. Mante? Mr. Hayfer?
Sure. I have three, three separate issues, two for Amy and one probably for Steve. The filing cost for individuals is alarming to me because of how much it is, but I understand why it's set where it is. My question really is, is something like this. If I'm an individual from one of the traditionally disenfranchised communities in Baltimore County and I want to raise an issue, but I don't have the funds to do it. Am I basically, and I call in and you tell me how much it is. What, what happens if I say to you, I can't afford it?
Um, you know, we would, you know, typically see if there's a community association that they are, that's operating within their community to see if that's someplace that they could reach out. Oftentimes, we would tell them to, you know, go meet with your planning board member, go meet with your county councilman. See, you know, I always try to remind anyone who contacts me about a C Z M P issue that you really need to be in contact with your planning board member and your county council person just to make them aware of what you're asking for and why, you know, they have a recommendation. County council has a, makes a decision and the sooner you can get in front of them, probably the better.
That's great. Thank you. That was exactly the answer I was hoping that, that you had. And that it just wasn't closing the door to an individual. That's perfect. Thank you. My second question is really about, just we have to be careful in how we talk about the crowdsourcing tool and who exactly is providing input. Remember, those are people who have, who are digitally literate. They have access to a computer. They have access to understanding how to get to the website. And those are people with an interest in what's happening in terms of planning and land use. So it's a lot of preconditions to exactly who it is that's weighing in on those tools. So we can't represent that that's feedback from the public at large. It's feedback from a very small subset of the public. So we just had to be careful about our wording. And then the final issue I had, and I think Steve's kind of aware of this. I'm going to be out of the country on vacation, Australia, New Zealand during the month of February of twenty-four. Money's already been paid, you know, can't get it back. We've been going round and round a little bit about who might be able to be there, at least in a listening capacity, when they do the District Seven listening session. And something Amy said triggered an idea. I just wanted to put out there for the, for Steve and Amy to think about is, could that district planner for District Seven just be acknowledged there as the listener and the note taker? Because all the board role it is at these C Z M P hearings, these public hearings, is essentially we're information gathering. We're not voting or anything. Could at least someone be acknowledged as being there from District Seven who's taking notes and listening? Because clearly I'm not going to be able to be there.
The community planner will be present. Certainly, Mr. Hayfer, you're free to have someone sort of sit in the audience and take notes on your behalf to feed, provide you the responses or information that you think may be most germane to particular issues being raised. That may be the most effective way.
Right. But can that, can that be state? See, I don't want people thinking that nobody's there listening. If, if it could be somehow acknowledged that while the person, while I'm not there, there are people in the audience who are taking notes on my behalf. Is that able to publicly?
We could acknowledge that you had a previous commitment, could not be available and that you have representatives in the audience.
That works great. Thank you. That's everything I have.
Mr. Warren?
Yeah, I just, in the past, I think this is my third one now, but we had a list, a printed out list of each issue for those hearings. Historically, they had your opinion on there. I guess we won't have that at our benefit at this, at these meetings, but we will still have those, right? And we'll have your opinion prior to, you know, in sufficient time so we can review the particular issues on our own prior to the public.
Our, our recommendation will not be on the log of issues or made public prior to the hearing, which is February. But in March, we will put out our recommendation and then the planning board meets and votes in April.
We will still have the same forums that we've had in the past to take notes on and whatnot.
Yes.
Thank you. That's all I had.
Kathy?
Thank you. Regarding the signs, is there any guidance as pertaining to the orientation of the signs when they're, when they're placed? Are they running perpendicular to the roadway or are they running parallel to the roadway? You know, when they're, when they're parallel to the roadway, frequently they're impossible to be seen by anyone driving by. And while I understand that notifications have been sent out to adjacent property owners, there are plenty of people that are affected in these communities by, by zoning changes that, you know, should be made aware of the petitions. So how are, how are the signs placed?
I'll have to check with permits, approvals and inspections as to what the requirements are, like from that technical level for the county sign posters. I don't know if they're told to place them a certain way or not, but I can check into that.
Great. Thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Pearllo?
Can you hear me?
Now again.
Oh, you can?
Yes.
I have the same problem that I am away about twelve days in February. This question, whether it's worth just checking with the whole board to see that there's not anybody else. That it's a lot of us missing, you know, for some reason we are changing it from previous things. I made my plans figuring that our hearings, you know, in the high schools would be in March, as it generally has been in the past. I don't know if there's anybody else there on the board that has any issues as well, but better to know them now.
Thank you, Mr. Pearllo. Any other questions? Not hearing any? If there's no further questions, thank you again, Ms. Mante, for your presentation. Ms. Bensley will now fill us in on legislation recently passed by the county council filing our last meeting. Ms. Bensley?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Bill fifteen twenty-three zoning regulations, medical clinic and medical office uses in the business local restricted B L R zone for the purpose of permitting a medical clinic by right in the B L R zone under certain circumstances, amending the definition of certain terms and generally relating to uses permitted in the B L R zone. Resolution six dash twenty-three, approval of Maryland Rural Legacy Plan applications. A resolution of the Baltimore County Council to approve and rank three rural legacy area plan applications submitted to the Maryland Department of Natural Resources for consideration and approval by the Maryland Rural Legacy Board for funding in fiscal year twenty twenty-four. The following three plans have been reviewed and endorsed by the county executive as consistent with the county's master planning, zoning, capital improvement program, natural resource protection and other policies and programs of Baltimore County. Piney Run Watershed Rural Legacy Area, Manor Rural Legacy Area and Gunpowder Valley Rural Legacy Area. And that concludes the report, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Bensley. Well, this is the conclusion of our agenda. And as a reminder, our next meeting will be Thursday, May eighteenth, and that meeting will be virtual. We will have a public hearing on the master plan starting at, at five o'clock. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Thank you. I thought we were going to be staying here. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Thank you all and enjoy this upcoming wonderful weather.
Thanks, Man.